Yeah, so you're a couple of concepts here, I think we're talking about. One is moving away from a complaint basis to a proactive basis. And and I completely, well, I know that council is is now no longer in a complaint basis, but we want to be proactive.
Okay.
It's another reason why we're here. The second thing is that you're talking about our, what kind of teeth do we have enforcing this? And that's a problem in itself.
Yes.
Remember, I just said that we've have a property owner who's been to court five times. Guess what?
He never does anything.
And the judge isn't necessarily going to do much about it either. So it's an ongoing deal. And it gets drawn out. This process with this property has been going on for about two years. And still, nothing's been done. And so that's the frustrating part is the results aren't always fast. Now, I would say in most cases, most people are, yep, this is an issue. Thank you for making it. I'll take care of it because I don't want any trouble. But there is also a group of people who will push you and continue to push you. And that's something that will play out with the system that we have with the court system in Henemah County. That's all we can do when it comes to that. But I think what we want to kind of narrow in on tonight, too, is just talking about the chap- the code itself, the chapter in there. Is it specific enough? Is it too subjective? Can we define some things a little bit better that really say this is blight? For instance, a example is you've got the property along Highway twelve that is a residential property. And it has in the past sold different items out of a garage and had sales there. Well, the sales are illegal. There's no debate about that. But some of the items on the property can be construed as lawn art and not blight. But other people can look at that and say, that's blight. That's not lawn art. And that kind of leaves staff in an awkward place of, oh, we have a, you have to have it subjective. So I don't know the answer is part of the problem.
Well, if it's larger than a flamingo and it's smaller, so somewhere between three feet and the rooster that was out there one time, blight.
Yeah.
Um, one of, just an aside, he moved all of his funny things like that, or most of them, into Long Lake.
I know he did, yeah.
Gas station. And I told two of my friends who live along Lake that that we kicked the guy out. That he had to go. And both of them just did one of those, well, thank you very much, Maple Plain. And I, I said, you're very welcome, um, to them because it is, I, I think, I understand people who say it's my property. And I can do what I want. I kind of think of them as like the Wild West or, you know, the cowboy, I'm going to do what I want to do. And you can take me to court. And, you know, and a judge looking at it, I mean, he might even look and say, well, can the guy really afford to do it? I, I don't know. I don't know the answer. Um, I think, I, I know in that little paper, there was, um, and the thing that comes in the bill, there was one time something in there, either that or the newspaper where it talked about kind of keeping your property up. Maybe there has to be like a whole lot more of that.
Sure.
And, and, um, and one of the things that in, in my neighborhood, although it's kind of turned over, there's been a lot of houses that have sold directly across from me. Um, he, he recently sold his house and he moved. His house literally, and garage, was falling down around him, like, literally.
Sure.
Falling down around him. And his house is, you know, maybe eighty years old or something like that. Well, when he went to sell it, it was sold as, as is. If you read what it said, it was sad. I mean, I thought it was sad. Well, the lender for the young man that bought it wouldn't even allow it to happen until the roof on both of them got done. And, um, and Dave, Dave didn't do it. The, the kid did it. But he, he couldn't even get the loan until he had put a new roof on these things. And, you know, put new boards up so you couldn't see into the garage and, and the whole thing. And there were some other things like that. Dave didn't have two nickels to rub together.
Yep.
And, and I've brought this up before, and I know that this isn't the city's responsibility. But if someone, there were, there are a lot of seniors in Maple Plain. And, um, some of the houses that were in dire straits in my neighborhood were people who are seniors, who I'm sure, like Dave, didn't have money to fix something. And I don't know if there's like, if somebody can put together a listing of, um, everything from, you know, government agencies or social services or, um, Boy Scout troops that would be willing to, you know, paint, um, you know, like a lot of businesses do.
Sure.
Paint-a-thons where they'll go and, you know, paint an old person's house white or purple or whatever color they want.
Do you want more purple ones?
No, actually, I was, don't put that down.
That's, that's great response.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, somebody else has blocked, I mean, but something like that where there's, if, if someone.
Assistance if needed.
Right. Or are there, is there something where there's an opportunity for, um, um, carpenters and/or those kinds of people to, um, volunteer X amount of hours? I, I, I don't know.
Sure.
But where you can help somebody.
Oftentimes, a Lions Club will do that type of thing if they know about it.
Yeah. And I know that church groups have done things, but that we somehow get word out. Because I want people to be able to stay in their homes as long as they can. But I also understand if you don't have the money and you're thinking of, let's eat or have the birds fly into the garage the wrong way, I'll, I'll pick the, the food to eat. When I look, look at this, you know, to answer your question of, do we need to update these? I, I'm sure that we, we could. But when I go through and I look at places.
Sure.
All, almost all of them, something in here, we could point at and say, you need to do it because of this. You need to do it because of that. And if we went through and had something where it was more regular, where people looked and you, you looked at somebody and you said, okay, do eighty percent, the eighty twenty rule, do eighty percent of these get taken care of if we really make this happen as it's written? And then look at the twenty percent and say, what, what is it? Why, what, what are we not, what are we missing? Or why isn't this ever done? And, and, you know, the gentleman on the corner, part of the deal was he was supposed to clear the garbage up. And that included the old Christmas tree that had all the stuffed animals in it. And somebody one time told me, well, the stuffed animals aren't there anymore. And I said, no, come here, stand right here and look. The Christmas tree is literally, there's nothing left to it. It's going to fall down on somebody at some point. And you see these poor stuffed fur things plastered to the trunk. So they're all still there. And he would be, you know, like, you're not supposed to have old junky cars. And you're not supposed to have a porta potty for a year. And you're not supposed to have a blah, blah, blah.
Sure.
So you could go and tick every single one of those off. And what he does is he laughs at you. He leaves his garbage cans out on the street pretty much all the time. They're on the street. He doesn't care that nobody else in his neighborhood does that. Um, I, you know, most of it is residential. Maybe that's what I look at, that KMH.
Sure.
Director, whatever, clean it up. Make it, I, I. Yeah. I, I mean, just dirt, whatever, um, mores and all there's, or monies, I mean, and all their weeds, including you can't see the city sign, um, and, you know, like the, um, old, um, and I know it's hard, like the schoolhouse. I mean, it's for sale again.
Yep.
And, um, so they don't really care. But, you know, how do, how do we make somebody like that who probably is a out-of-state owner? Pay, pay up, Bud, you know, if.
So, so I think, um, I mean, your examples are good. Why, why we didn't try to like write anything or even, even send out the ordinance?
Yeah.
Is because we want to understand what, what do you see as the issues? What are they? And does our ordinance cover it? Because you can get into a, a write-a-thon with, with nuisance and blight and, but there, there's a lot of different areas to that, um, to, to those issues. And a lot of times you can, you can write really extensive ordinances, but it really just comes down to an enforcement. And then this follow-up enforcement.
Yes.
Is, is what's painful for most communities to administer. From somebody who's done it for twenty-four year, twenty, almost twenty-five years now, especially in this area, I found the system to be against the city and for the landowner. So it's super difficult to enforce. I think Bobby's example is, is really good in that, um, you know, you've got one perennial abuser of there, of, of the kind of blight issue. And now you're going to end up going to court. Um, I've had a, a business, I think I mentioned it before, in Independence, although it pretty darn near backs up to Maple Plain. And we went three years and a hundred thousand dollars into legal fees to try to enforce zoning and blight, right?
Yeah.
Um, which is crazy. But there, there was no help from anybody. So the city had to just commit. And, and honestly, it's now probably tainted the council the other way to go, really? We don't, we, we can't do that with every property. But there was nothing in the ordinance that Judge actually found in the city's favor, one hundred percent. It was, he's like, your ordinance says exactly what it needs to say, and they are wholly in violation.
Yeah.
Good luck enforcing, you know, I mean, you can go to jail and it still doesn't matter.
Then it's kind of like, um, I think I gave things to Nicole one time. I, I grew up and lived my lot of years in St. Cloud. And one of the things that, uh, St. Cloud is big enough now that there's like wards and neighborhoods and all those kinds of things. And I grew up in a neighborhood called Hester Park, because there's a park on the river called Hester Park. And, um, one of the things that St. Cloud has done, in particular in their little neighborhoods, and some of them are better about it, is kind of the incentive of, if you can't, you know, if the, what, the carrot or the mallet, if the mallet doesn't work, then how about the carrot? And one of the things, and I can get some more literature or go out on St. Cloud and, and look at it. One of the things they do is, um, they have a, like, if you've done something in your yard that has made it beautiful or attractive or different in a good way, kind of thing, um, they want to know about it. And there's like committees, like there's a Hester Park Committee, Neighborhood Committee, that they go around the, the neighborhood. And my sister has gotten it twice where, um, and she is a good gardener and she has, uh, you know, postage stamp yard. But it's beautiful. She has plants and bushes and she keeps things together. So you're incentivizing a neighborhood and others to, if nothing else, I, and they put a sign that says, and you wake up one morning and there's a sign, boing, in your neighbor, in, in your yard that says, um, you know, something to the effect of,
You're making a difference.
You've made it pretty, or yay, kind of thing. And then I think they get, and you don't have to do this, but I think they give them like, I don't know, send them twenty or twenty-five dollars or something like that. I mean, it's just yay for doing it. And if you buy seeds or something, here's a little bit of money. And it's kind of a surprise, Patty. You don't, you don't go out and say, I want this and so I'm going to do it. Well, she did it, others in her neighborhood did it. And then you start seeing these little signs. And people start talking to each other about, yes, your yard looks gorgeous, her front and backyard look good. But it's also something where a neighbor might say to someone, well, you might never ever get something. You know, how, how do you encourage people to want to have a nice-looking city?
I think that, that's great. And we also, that's kind of like, something like that could happen. But I think that's probably going to get more of the people that are in the middle to maybe improve. But the, the problem child's.
Yeah, still going to be a problem.
That are taking you to the court and refusing to do anything are not going to be impacted by that.
You're, you're probably right.
So, sounds like we need, I don't know, I guess I'm asking, maybe you're asking us, but, you know, that we need more specificity and more teeth in the ordinance in order to enforce it? Or is it, uh?
I don't know that. Because for me, it's, for me, it's more what are the issues? And then does our ordinance address it? And it's almost like that's some, somewhat of a legal issue, too. We have to. What I was, what, what I would hope we could do is let's identify what are the, what are the problems? Not every single one, but what are in general the problems? And like you said, does our ordinance already address it? And it's just enforcement? Because we could check it off in there? Or is it that, um, our ordinance doesn't address it? And then what is it? And then how do we address it? Because if you just start writing?
Yeah.
So, so different communities have different things, like, um, a community farther west of here, I was working on ordinance and, and, um, it was about recreational vehicle storage. So they equated a lot of their blight to recreational vehicle storage. Fish houses, RVs, boat trailers, snowmobile trailers, snowmobiles, right? And so they had a parking problem where these things just kind of were everywhere. And so it wasn't junk, it wasn't junk vehicles, it wasn't inoperable vehicles. But they didn't really address recreational vehicles in the sense of like everything. And so they went through a process of updating that piece of their ordinance, um, because that was the issue. So I, I think we need to identify what are the issues or issue that we have? And then does our ordinance address it or not? And if not, why not? And then can we enhance that part of it?
You were looking for us to take a tour? Was that meant to be before this meeting or the next meeting?
Yeah, it, it's meant to be, this is kind of, going to be more iterative, right? Not a one, one-night solution, like the trans-immersion. So I think, um, I think we need to like, you know, be thoughtful in how we go about this. But I, I think that, yeah, I mean, like, you came with a list, which is good. But I think if we could identify ones that we, we think about and then let's apply our ordinance and say, would it, would it fix that by enforcement or not?
One thing, one thing I think would be great, it might be a homework assignment, but for you guys, is, uh, what if we met again in December? And, uh, kind of the homework assignment is, uh, look around town. If you see things that you consider are blight, and then reflect that to where in the code you think that is.
And meanwhile, we'll get a foot of snow and cover everything up. It'll all look really good.
Until spring.
No, no, no. That's why you got to do this. And then we're not going to get snow until this week.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I think, I think we all know the places that have to cold.
I didn't have time. I mean, I got the packet, I think, Tuesday or something like that. I didn't have time to look at it yesterday. So it was like, I had no time to really.
It's a, this was an introduction to.
Yes.
Yeah, this was an introduction to let's talk about it, but let's start thinking about it. And then let's, let's figure out, is our ordinance adequate or not, one? And then talking about what are the issues? Because maybe some of that helps with the proactive, um, um, administration of the ordinance, right? So Bobby doesn't, I mean, he's one person. So for, for him, even though you can do it two or three times a year, it's really hard to, to identify everything. And maybe he'll drive by something and go, that's all right. In the scheme of things, that looks fine.
And I think that that's fair. I, I think that's okay. But I also think, and, and, and maybe this is one of those things where, um, it's not that I'm saying spend the penny, but categorically, one of the first things in my mind is there is no enforcement until something is so egregious that it, I mean, you can't, you could smell it, you can look at it, you can taste it, you can, whatever. You can't ignore it anymore. And so if that's part of it, even, let's just say that something's missing from here, and it probably is. We could make this just whiz. And if, if somebody goes, oh, I, I, you know, I don't really think that we should, you know, go after and bother somebody and enforce it, then it, and it, then we're right at the same place that we've been for.
Correct.
The twenty years that I've been here, where, um, and I, nobody wants to, I'm not going to go and, um, you know, one of my neighbors never cleans up their leaves in the fall, period. So my yard looks beautiful for two hours. And then the first wind comes and it's all gone. And, okay, I, I, leaves, you know, the grass will grow and all that kind of stuff. I, not that. But the character on the corner, hello.
Yep.
Um, and, and it's, it's one of those things. And that's why when I did this and went through, you know, I looked at this and I went, well, this one would be answered by doing this. And I didn't so far come up with something where I said,
We don't have a tool.
This is totally missing, except for the people where something is literally falling down. And I know it's because they.
Condition, the housing condition.
Financially don't have the money.
Sure.
And, and that's, that's like a whole nother problem.
But I do think your point on that is one that we can carry back to council. And then Bobby's here, so he can hear it, too. But, um, putting together, just educate, I mean, there's two things on education I think are really good. One, educating people on property condition and that they, we do have requirements, just getting that word out. And that the city is going to look at it.
Yes.
That's important. But then on the, on the property, um, uh, piece, you know, Henemah County's got a really good program for senior rehabilitation programs for housing.
Okay.
Um, and they, they are actually really good. And we should probably tap into them more. I just met with the person from their, um, from their economic, whatever they call their department, Housing and Economic. But, um, she was just out here to talk to us about some of their programs. And we should tap in because they're, they're using the heck out of their resources east of us, but we don't do them out here. Because a lot of times people don't associate that, right?
Yeah, we're part of the cities. We're in Henemah County.
Yeah.
And, and I think, I mean, it's all kinds of things. I would think that somebody would, if, if somebody had helped Dave, he'd probably still be there.
Yeah.
Still be a neighbor.
But that resource list is super valuable, right? So if we had a packet where somebody could come or a neighbor could say, hey, you know what? I know the city has this. Why don't you take a look at our little brochure here? Maybe one of these pro- programs could help you. Um, maybe they do it.
And if you talk to something like that, all the, you know, the bill inserts and the, the newspaper and all those kinds of things, you know, where you're putting out, here's what you can do. Because the, the population is aging, period. You know?
Sure.
You're going to get old.
Someday. It'll be sooner than later. I have a question. Are there any abandoned houses in Maple Plain right now?
I think there's one just down the street from you.
Well, that's what I was wondering. My husband feels it is. I'm not sure. I see trucks and cars go out of that property, but.
I'd have to, what's the property address?
Fifteen nineteen Wyman.
It's on the list.
No, no, no. I'm thinking the one that Mardel and I have to drive by.
Sure.
Um, which would be on Bryant.
Yes, I know that there is one on Bryant. That is an issue.
That's fifty-three fifty-four.
I'm aware of that one.
Okay.
That's, that's exactly what I wanted.
Let's just hire Michelle to go around.
Yep.
I mean.
Yep, yep.
I'm not kidding. Temporary employee.
You can appoint anybody zoning administrator. Michelle may have a new category.
If, if you turn to go to me, is it right there? Is it that one?
If you, if you were on Bryant, if you're on Bryant, go past your street and it's dark green. And the grass is, is more than twelve inches.
Yeah.
And, and it, it looks like it's.
You must be going east.
Yeah, she is going east from, from our house. She's going east from our house. It's on the left side.
North side, yeah.
Yeah, I know this property.
Yeah, it's on the left side of the road.
Save me, tell me that address again.
Um, fifty-three fifty-four Bryant.
I know there's another vacant one, but that's well kept up.
Oh, no, that one vacant one is really strange, too. But that is, yeah, but they do take care. They.
They.
I would not want to see the inside of that house by any means.
One of the ones, because I, I looked at businesses, too.
Sure.
And when you go down, you know, like, um, Bud and Industrial.
You're talking about Bump's Auto Marine?
No, no, Bud and Industrial is the.
Oh, Bud Industrial, yep, on the other.
The, the other business that.
Where, where used to be Bump's, I think.
Yep.
I'm sorry, that has in the last couple of years gone from.
So that's a, yeah, so that's a good example of enforcement. So the city has actively gotten that business out of there. That's gone. They're not, it's not a hundred percent cleaned up at thirteen fifty Bud, which is that, is that the property?
Thirteen fifty.
Yeah.
Yep. That business no longer works there.
I mean, that has taken.
The naughty list for Christmas.
That's taken a ton of, I mean, I've, I've written myself probably four letters. I bet John Thames, your attorney, has written more than that. Half dozen. And then went and, and had meetings and conversations with the property owner. And see, this is, this is just where enforcement, so, so the interesting story in that, it was owned by a, a company, a real estate company, basically a holding company. They, um, they lost it into foreclosure because they weren't paying their rent. But at the same time, they were leasing it. So they're leasing it to anybody. The company who came in and leased it is called Creus Corp. They're a laptop sealant product manufacturing company of some kind.
That's the guy that showed up with your house, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was probably. No, they, they sell wholesale or like bulk, but they, they came in overnight. So now they just came, they didn't have site planned, they started paving. We sent a letter saying, hey, you got to stop. Um, you can't do this. But who do you send the letter to? So we sent it to the business and the property owner. Well, the property owner's now in foreclosure, so they don't own it. The bank now has the title to it. The property, the lessor, or the tenant in this case, is, they don't care. It's not their property. So, okay, what, you can tell me I'm not in compliance with the ordinance, but I don't own it. I'm just using it. They leased, they leased it to me. So we were in this like crazy cycle. It took two and a half years, three years.
It took a long time.
Ironically, another city I represent, they moved there. So, and they're, they're the exact same problem there now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, when I saw the name, I'm, yeah, I laughed, too. I said to the administrator there, I said, seriously.
So how about the new, do you call them townhouses, what, behind the bank? Why are there still mounds of dirt, garbage, lumber, all sorts of things behind there?
They're not done yet.
Yeah.
They're not done yet.
Is that on your list? I did, I did get over there, but I didn't, I don't know if that's the right name, but I'm.
Well, is there anything in the, uh, ordinance in terms of enforcement that we need to address? Or is it more?
I think it depends on the problem. So I don't, I don't know that there is or isn't.
Is the process in the ordinance? Or is, is it more of just a legal?
There's both. The process, we have a process in our ordinance, but it follows essentially statutory, um, requirements on how you enforce. And I do think there are different processes for enforcement, um, that get complicated. But I don't know that, I don't know that one is, is better or worse than the other.
Do you haven't identified any flaw in the ordinance in terms of enforcement that we could look at?
Not yet. No, no. And with the, with the item, so, you know, I mean, that, I was, the property behind your, or next to your house, right? We went and enforced that. Um, I, have they gone back? Are they still bad? Are they?
It's, it's slowly regressing.
Yeah, but it did get, it did get cleaned up for, for the most part. And our process worked. And that one, we went to court twice.
They put a fence, which wasn't for the ordinance, but.
Yeah.
Uh, and so now they're hiding more stuff.
Yeah. So I mean, and then that's the thing, right? We went to court twice. It got cleaned up. We let, we said, okay, check, you're done.
But it's just the nature.
And now that person's slowly regressing. And we're going to have to go back now and write them another. And, and you can imagine the. them another, and, and you can imagine the people that we're dealing with, while we wanna say everybody's a great person, they, they don't, they're not the kind of person.
There are some mental health issues involved, and sometimes.
Yeah.
They don't care.
They don't care.
Correct.
They're just saying, thanks, but I'll, I'll slow play you.
And, and, and I understand, I mean, that's human nature, and, and I understand that, but I think somehow we can, because I, I don't want, you know, I, I don't like going around and seeing this, but if somebody says, well, Michelle, if it has to be a complaint type of thing, why don't you go and complain about it kind of thing? I don't want people coming and knocking on my door saying.
You know what, all our complaints are anonymous, to be honest, unless you want your name associated, and they are protected. You are protected legally by that.
You can be a little more.
So, so you can, but here's the one thing I will.
Because I no longer have a big dog to scare everybody out.
Here's the one thing I will tell you.
Yeah, the little ones won't help you.
The one thing I'll tell you on the complaint versus proactive, so these are like real terms, these are, these are terms that, that are actually, they're written about and they're, they're in statute, but the, if you go to a proactive system, the one flaw with that is you have to do it to everyone. So if you don't, then a court's gonna say, if somebody could come in and say, like the guy with the stuffed animals, that one's, that one's probably a great slam dunk, but if they could go and say, I know three other properties that have stuffed animals in their yard that you haven't enforced? The judge is gonna say, you're not, you're not applying it across the board. And so you're arbitrarily applying it or selectively picking, now all of a sudden, those will get thrown out. And I've seen it happen, you know, before, where we've had code enforcement cities, and then somebody comes in and goes, well, here's six properties that all have the same, you know, shed issue or whatever it is, and the judge will go, well, city, you're not applying this across the board, and so I'm throwing this out.
And that makes sense. It, but it also, on the other hand, if it is more of a proactive, where, where I think that everybody knows the city better than, because one of the things, as I was reading through this, is it's very clear in here where it says, you know, in a, like in an apartment or a, you know, like a multiple, multiple, what am I trying to say?
Yeah, multiple family.
Thank you.
Housing?
Housing type of thing. You're not supposed to have a grill on a deck.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, right behind me, there's a duplex. There's a big, big old grill sitting up there. And I think you'd also find things, I had, he did move it, I, I don't know if somebody told him, there have been new neighbors coming into the neighborhood, and somebody put up a, it's pretty, a lovely fence, but he literally had, part of the chanel was like right, like, here's the telephone pole.
Yep.
There it is.
Yep.
It's been moved. I don't know if he's smartened up, but he's also kind of taken over part of the neighbor's yard. I don't know that they understand that, but it was, you know.
He put up a fence on his neighbor's yard?
Um, kinda. He's making assumption that the neighbor's fence is on the property line, and it's not.
Okay.
Sure.
But it, so it, you know, you, that's why when I was doing this, I'm going, oh, well, hmm, you know, kind of thing. So when I was thinking about it, like, if all of these could be.
But even if the city went around, they might not see the grill on the deck.
This one you would, but you're right, sometimes you don't.
I mean, and even weeds, I mean, they're not gonna walk through every yard.
No, and, but I think, I mean, I, I didn't walk through people's yards. I, I mean, I, you just go for a walk and or drive, and, and, you know, some of this.
Some of them, some of them jump at you.
Yeah.
Well, it depends upon who you are.
Well, I'd like the opportunity to, to do their, our little windshield, windshield survey and.
Yep, I think it's a good exercise, yeah.
Yeah, before you take it to the council even, you know, that we can talk about it in December, if you get.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's not, it's not like we're trying to rush this, I mean, I don't know, maybe, I don't wanna speak for the council. I know they wanna get something done, but I think you've gotta, I think we've gotta step back and say, okay, what are the issues? And then, how do we address them? Because otherwise, we could just write a bunch of stuff, and it, it might not be, it might not be applicable, so.
Well, and one new thing that I heard you mention in response to your question about what is art, what is junk? Because councils had that same discussion regarding that property. So maybe this group thinks about, do we limit the size of lawn ornaments? Do we limit the number? Because, you know, we have pile of junk. Well, what defines a pile? Some might say it's just one thing. Does that define junk, or is it a piece of art? And so I think maybe have this group consider, what does a pile mean? What is, you know, the size of things that are allowed?
And even on something, I, I love, you know, wildflowers and things like that. And so there are, there are houses in Maple Point that have had gorgeous lawns that way, where you're kind of looking at that. But then, two of the ones that I liked, it's like, all of a sudden now, it's, it's, well, one of them, I, I gotta tell you, it, it's not pretty anymore, because it just looks like, well, I've just decided that I'm gonna call it a wildflower garden, and I'm not going to do anything with it. And, and you're kind of going, oh, okay.
Yep.
And then one of the, I don't know if it's Independence, I think it's still Maple Point, but just past me where you would turn, you know, there's Joyce, and then the next one to go right?
Timber.
There's that house that sits there, and they had, they had fun little tchotchkes outside, and they had a, you know, like a lot of things. And then even before they moved or got gone, or however they left, all of a sudden it was like, oh, this is like kind of bizarre. And, and, and now there's been one of those big dump things sitting there for over.
And that one's in Independence. I know it's one you're talking about.
That one is in Independence.
It's, it's like they haven't finished anything, and it's, it's all been like that for months.
I know, I know.
Tell them.
Which one is it?
Well, I think that one's almost abandoned too, dear. I think it was.
Yeah, that one isn't a, that was a foreclosure, see, that's the issue. We cited them, but we're citing a bank in Nebraska or something.
Yeah.
It takes, then it just takes a ton of time to get back to it.
So.
But yeah, that one, that, we did, we did get that boarded up and some of the like life safety things fixed.
Yeah, and somebody came and put new siding.
Yeah, so now I think it's sold again.
Took the fence down.
In case of foreclosures, that seems to be an issue. Can the city do some lawn maintenance, clean it up, and then charge?
So lawns are super easy, right? Because we can go mow, and we, we can abate that very simply, but it's really black and white. You know, your, your grass can be no more than X.
Twelve, twelve inches.
We did that.
So as soon as it's over, boom, we can go mow it. And we can hire somebody to mow it, and then we can, we can actually assess the property that we.
Yes, exactly.
So, but that's, that's not with everything. So, you know, going on property and taking goods or taking personal property, you get really, well, we get, it just gets so much murkier, right? So, and you gotta either declare an imminent hazard, health hazard, a risk to public safety, there, there's other things, you can't just go on a property and say, I don't like that statute, and we determined it not to be in compliance with our ordinance, we'll take it. And abate it, right? You can't do that.
So what, I, if you guys are willing, I'd, I'd really enjoy it if you guys went around and just looked at examples of blight that you see around town, and then, well, let's talk about it more at the December Planning Commission meeting. You know, I think this is something too, in the future, just looking at, this could be an ongoing topic that we continually bring up here at the Planning Commission too. You know, everyone sees different things in town. And so I think it's, for me, it's helpful if I can utilize multiple different viewpoints to see what others see too, so.
We can do that.
Alrighty.
All right. Well, that was it.
I got approached, I'm sorry, honey.
No, no, go ahead.
Today I got approached by a person in our neighborhood, which we are over by the nursing home, the present nursing home, and they wanted to know what was happening with that site. Has anybody heard anything?
Nothing's determined yet. In fact, those conversations, we haven't, we haven't gone anywhere with them at all. So it's, I would say, obviously, the new nursing home would not be completed earliest is end of next year. So it's still going to be used for another year.
Yeah.
I, I imagine as we progress through next year, those conversations will take place. Again, I would stress, it's zoned residential one, so it's.
That was my next question, because somebody asked me that. I'm like, I need to look that up again, but no one to disconfirm it with me.
There is a conditional use permit attached to the property that allows for the senior care. But even changing it into apartment building would require a zoning change, so I, what would end up happening that I see is that there'd be conversations next year with staff about possible options, and then what we would do is then review that with the Planning Commission. I don't know what those options are, nothing has even been whipped around with me. I can't speak to any of that.
Okay.
Where's Wayne Cone?
They have, their main offices are now out of Golden Valley, so I know that they will be going there in the future.
Have they sold the building yet, or leased it?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I've talked to him nine months ago maybe about reuse, but nothing, I haven't seen anything.
Bummer.
Any other development prospects along twelve, along the new road that's coming through that you need to share?
Yeah, well, I can tell you that the city is working with QuickTrip right now. So I had a meeting with QuickTrip earlier this week and with the landowners, and so I am optimistic that.
That's on the gateway site out, out by the corner there.
That, in early, mid twenty twenty, I'm hopeful that we have an application in front of the Planning Commission to review.
Tell me that location again, Mark.
It's the one across from Holiday, behind Moni's.
Okay.
Basically, right, there, there's not a lot specifically there, they're gonna have to carve off a lot, but everything south of that new Gateway Boulevard that was plotted as a part of the Elam project, you know, is kind of developable land, and so that's where they'd be looking.
So that QuickTrip would, would be actually in our town then?
Actually help each other when it's that way, from a market standpoint.
From a market stand, yeah, because then.
Two gas stations across from each other.
Yeah.
But, but that's okay because of the fact they will become.
They're different markets. I mean, QuickTrip sells gas, but they also are, are kind of.
They're grocery.
Grocery store, which would be awesome.
Sorry, Barb, what were you saying?
Oh, and, but they will keep the, the gas?
Yeah, maybe they compete with each other.
They will, they will. Because in, in Long Lake, when they had five of them, they had people going out and scouting, and each day you could see one would be a little bit lower, and the next day, the next one would be a little lower. They had scouts out.
Competition.
So if they're across the street from each other, even though, you know, they are, would be across the street, they would be competing, but also that QuickTrip would be back in our town. Holiday is not in our town.
Correct.
Where people think, oh, you got a gas station. Like, no, we don't.
It was partially replaced in the F C too. They have a lot more food.
Correct.
Yes. We need a place to buy a loaf of bread.
Correct. They have a pretty big selection, I mean, they focus on that, so.
So would be one of like the big, big QuickTrips?
Yep.
You see the new ones?
Yep.
Wow. Anything, anything over there?
We're working, but, nothing. I mean, you know, there's a developer who's got the great plans for that site, but we just haven't been able to get traction on it yet, but I don't know, we'll see, E D A's meeting Monday, so.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday's better than Saturday.
Okay, so your E D As or our E D As meetings, are they open to the public?
Absolutely, yep.
And when are they? Because I've been doing Long Lakes for about five months now.